Good evening. This sixty-seventh meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Pastor Stevie Thompson of Wilson Park Christian Community Church. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. On this auspicious occasion to this august body, we seek the face of God to listen to the prayers of His servants. We ask for wisdom. We ask for understanding. We ask for knowledge. Grant that the actions and decisions made throughout our time together are pleasing in thy sight and that in your presence we are honored in all that we seek to do. In the words of our Saint Francis Assisi's, "Where there is hatred, let us so love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; where there is sadness, joy." Grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, as to loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, is in parting that we are parting, and is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Catherine Pitchford, Center for Urban Families.
I want to thank you, Council President and the Council for having us here today. So Center for Urban Families is located at twenty-two oh-one North Monroe Street. We've been there since nineteen ninety-nine. One of the things that we, one of the core things that we do is job readiness, linking to job placement and occupational trainings. And our idea is that we want to dismantle poverty in Baltimore City. We have a fatherhood program that works with men and women that are suffering with child support issues and helping them to enhance their skills on co-parenting. And so, we have been there. We intend you to work and partner with organizations throughout the city, and we look forward to sending anybody. It's some information we sent around that could be helpful to talk about our programs, that we more of the programs that we offer. We do offer couples and Strive Future Leaders, GED. We help with expungements. We help people to become homeowners. So there's so many things that we do. And our core strategy is to work with people for three to five years in case management and our all-in strategy because people need support throughout. Thank you.
Thank you. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the seventh, of the September the ninth, two thousand and nineteen proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the Journal is adopted. The Journal is adopted. Communications from the mayor. Executive nominations to be withdrawn.
EA nineteen dash zero two four nine, Wendy L. Blair, member, planning commission, District fourteen.
This nomination has been withdrawn. Executive nominations.
EA nineteen dash zero two five zero, Jill Dennis, member, Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District six.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four eight, sale of property, eight oh-one Bradish Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property known as eight oh-one Bradish Avenue, block two, three, seven, three, lot zero, zero, one, and no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, City Council President on behalf of administration, Councilman Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four nine, zoning use regulations, neighborhood commercial establishments, for the purpose of prohibiting the sale of tobacco products and electronic smoking devices, accessories, and related products by a retail goods establishment that is a neighborhood commercial establishment. Sponsors, Clark, President Scott, Henry, Cohen, Dorsey, Burnett, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Council. We have a special category in the new zoning code. It's called neighborhood commercial. In that category, if you have a residentially zoned property, a house usually, and you have a history anyplace in any year of having a commercial use in that property, no matter how long ago, you become eligible to seek a commercial use again in that property if granted permission by the zoning board. There are seven categories of commercial uses to which neighborhood commercial is restricted. The last one is retail goods establishments. This amendment says, if you have a retail establishment under neighborhood commercial, you may have that if the board grants it, but that use already, it says, may not health sale, sell alcohol. And the amendment says also, it may not have tobacco product or electronic smoking device, accessory, or related product sales. That's it. These are, would be commercial uses that are in the midst of neighborhoods because it's in a residentially zoned property with a history. And they are beginning to appear all over the city of Baltimore since our new zoning code came out. Because they're in neighborhoods, because lately, frankly, electronic smoking devices are beginning to prove to be a deadly influence on especially our children, at least here, we should not allow their sale right in the midst of homes and schools and residential neighborhoods. I hope that you will support this legislation so that we, because almost every week, cases of neighborhood establishment and retail goods establishments are coming before the board and getting approval. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four five zero, zoning signs, conversion of existing non-digital billboards, for the purpose of amending the provisions concerning the conversion of non-digital billboards. Sponsor, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, thank you. This should have been taken care of during Transform Baltimore, but it wasn't. And the purpose is basically change the provisions concerning the conversion of a non-digital billboard to a digital billboard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four five one, biennial comprehensive crime reduction plan, for the purpose of requiring that the mayor's office of criminal justice present to the city council a biennial comprehensive crime reduction plan specifying that the mayor's office of criminal justice develop the plan in consultation with certain agencies, establishing the contents of the plan and requiring the publication of the plan on the city's website for public comment. Sponsors, President Scott, Henry, Cohen, Schleifer, Costello, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Sneed, Clark, Reisinger, McCray.
Thank you. Please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor, Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor. Thank you to all my colleagues for co-sponsoring. We know that in this very chamber for the last two and almost two and a half years, when I sat as the chair of the Public Safety Committee, myself, this entire council and that committee argued, yelled, screamed, kicked, did everything that we could do to get their previous administration to present a crime plan, a comprehensive crime plan to the city council, and most importantly, to the citizens of Baltimore. That never happened. And what this legislation will do is to make sure that we never go two years again without having a crime plan. Because in my humble opinion, what we see on the streets of Baltimore in rising homicides and shootings is a direct result of that failed leadership. Because when there is no plan, people don't know what they should be doing. And we understand and we know, and we're appreciative of Commissioner Harrison and having a plan from the BPD standpoint, but we in this chamber know that the violence that we see in Baltimore is a public health issue, and it cannot solely be solved by the police department. It must require coordinated agencies through the city of Baltimore. So I thank you, and I look forward to this discussion. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. Resolutions introduced.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one six five R, Be More Clean Coordinated Agency Community Cleanup and Maintenance Strategy, for the purpose of requesting that the Director of the Department of Public Works, the Director of the Department of Transportation, the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Commissioner of the Department, of the Health Department, and the Director of the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation present to the city council a plan for coordinated community cleanup and maintenance throughout Baltimore, and a plan for increasing community involvement. Sponsors, Burnett, President Scott, Henry, Cohen, Schleifer, Sneed, Costello, Pinkett, Dorsey, Clark, Reisinger, McCray, Bullock.
Please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. As we all know, this is a huge issue impacting every district across the city of Baltimore, every neighborhood across the city of Baltimore. It's the issue of trash, of blight. It is a public health issue that requires a multi-agency response, much like we've said time and time again in this body that the issue of violence requires an all, all hands-on-deck approach, as does keeping our city clean and safe for all of our residents. We've been in the news a lot over the last few months about this very issue, and it requires all of the agencies to work in tandem to address, to make our city a cleaner Baltimore. And so I look forward to a great hearing, and thank you to all of the co-sponsors of this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one six six R, informational hearing, small haulers program and bulk trash program, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of the Public Works and the Department of Housing and Community Development to appear before the city council to discuss the small hauler program and bulk trash program, and how these programs can be adjusted to reduce illegal dumping. Sponsors, Henry, President Scott, Cohen, Schleifer, Sneed, Bullock, Costello, Pinkett, Dorsey, Burnett, Clark, Reisinger, McCray.
Please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Continuing on my colleague's theme of Cleaner Baltimore, we want to have a conversation specifically drilling down into the issue of illegal dumping and making it easier to dump legally. There are a couple of things that we would like to talk to DPW about. One of the basic ones is, we have this small haulers program. It was originally designed to make it easier for small haulers to be treated as something separate from the larger commercial haulers. But what we are finding is that it still doesn't really fit the need. You've got a lot of guys in the city who, they've got a truck, and they're trying to make some money hauling away stuff from people's houses or from businesses. But if you're only getting twenty or thirty bucks to haul something away, and the way that you do that legally is to pay the city ten or twenty bucks and only have two possible places to drop it off in the entire city, I think that's a recipe for illegal dumping. And so we want to talk to DPW about the fact that we, as the city of Baltimore, we are definitely paying far more than ten or twenty dollars to go out and pick up that sofa or old washing machine, or whatever it was that was dumped in an alley or a vacant lot, because it just wasn't cost-effective for somebody to dispose of it the way it should have been. Another conversation we'd like to have with DPW is, we've all had complaints from constituents who are trying to dispose of their own trash from their own home, but because they don't own a vehicle that's appropriate to take it to the dump, they find themselves trying to use a U-Haul or a ride-share, and when they get to the transfer station, DPW tells them, well, that's a commercial vehicle you're driving, so you need a small hauler's permit. It should be simpler than that. It should be easy to legally dispose of your own trash here in the city. We should be making that easier, and I want to thank all my co-sponsors for co-sponsoring this resolution. I look forward to working with the chairs of both committees to have this conversation in conjunction with the one for Councilman Burnett's legislation, and hopefully what will come out of this is a more sensible way for the city to look at keeping itself cleaner. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one six seven R, creating another early voting polling place in West Baltimore, for the purpose of endorsing the creation of another early voting polling place in West Baltimore. Sponsors, Pinkett, Henry, Cohen, Schleifer, Sneed, Costello, Dorsey, Burnett, Clark, Reisinger, Bullock.
Please add Council President Scott as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Early voting has become a critical means to ensure that people have the opportunity to vote. Baltimore presently has seven early polling places, only one of which is in what could be considered central West Baltimore. That location, which is at University of Maryland Baltimore, is historically the lowest-performing polling place of the seven, primarily because the location is not centrally located for the majority of West Baltimore constituents. In an effort to promote voter participation and increase accessibility, I, with the support of the representatives of the Fortieth Legislative District, introduce this resolution calling for the creation of an additional site in West Baltimore that affords the accessibility that we would all agree is essential to increase voter participation. Sites like Coppin State University, Frederick Douglass High School, or even Mondomin Mall, to name a few, all provide a centralized location with access to public transit. I thank you for your support and look forward to the hearing on this resolution.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary Committee.
City Council Resolution nineteen dash zero one six eight R, growing the film industry in Baltimore, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore Office of Promotion and Arts to speak at an informational hearing regarding the current status and future potential of the film industry in Baltimore, and asking the 2020 Baltimore City delegation to the Maryland General Assembly to support an increase in film production activity tax credit amounts in order to maintain and grow the film industry in Baltimore City. Sponsors, Pinkett, President Scott, Henry, Cohen, Dorsey, Bullock, Sneed, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Maryland Film Production Activity Tax Credit is an incentive program which was established to attract film and television productions to Maryland, create jobs for Marylanders, stimulate business activity in the state, and provide strong economic impacts. This incentive program is administered as a refundable tax credit, meaning no upfront funding is needed under this tax credit program. The rebate is given only after production is finished, money is spent, qualified spending is approved through an audit, and tax return, and a tax return is filed. This is the most transparent tax credit in the state. According to the Maryland Department of Commerce, from 2011 to 2018, film and television productions hired over twenty thousand Marylanders, these are electricians, carpenters, caterers, et cetera, did business with over eighteen thousand Maryland businesses, created a projected total economic impact of one billion dollars. These are jobs and dollars that, but for that tax credit, would not have come to Maryland. But in order to sufficiently grow and maintain the industry, it is necessary to increase the annual available tax credit amount. Presently, from fiscal year twenty through twenty-three, the credit will increase from eleven million dollars to twenty million, a figure that pales in comparison to states like Pennsylvania, seventy million dollars, New Jersey, seventy-five million dollars, Ohio, forty, North Carolina, thirty-four, and then even Georgia or Illinois where there's no cap at all. During a time when the landscape of the film industry is shifting, this is a prime time for the state of Maryland to increase these credits, to take advantage of the potential economic impact that can be realized in this industry. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. Consent Calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar will be approved. The consent calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move short titles on second and third reader for the duration of the hearing.
Without objection, there will be short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles are approved. Committee Reports. We will now move to bills on second reader, executive appointments.
EA nineteen dash zero two four four, Thomas K. M. Cujo, MD, and PH.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, committee held hearings on September the eighteenth, twenty nineteen. I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This nomination is approved.
EA nineteen dash zero two four six, Gillian Aldabron.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This nomination is approved.
EA nineteen dash zero two four seven, Tiara M. Hawks.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This nomination is approved.
EA nineteen dash zero two four eight, Natalie Novak.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of approving this nomination say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This nomination is approved. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three seven seven, whistleblower rights and responsibilities.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing, the, and there are amendments on my colleagues' desks. I move the bill favorably as amended.
You move the amendments, Mr. Councilman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill as amended say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three three seven, youth athletic protection.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing. There are amendments on our colleagues' desks. In addition, there are also second reader amendments from Council President Scott on our colleagues' desks. At this time, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four one two, city property, renaming Engine Fifty-Two Fire Station to Hilton L. Roberts Senior Fire Station.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero two nine four, rezoning certain properties to be rezoned to the new IMU dash two zoning district.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendments on my colleagues' desk. I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three three eight, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district, variance eleven hundred ten Edmondson Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the findings of facts will be adopted. The findings of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three six nine, rezoning, two nine zero eight Belmont Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the findings of fact will be adopted. The findings of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three seven zero, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R-eight zoning district, variances thirteen twenty-six West Pratt Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
I move the finding of facts.
Without objection, the findings of fact will be adopted. The findings of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
This bill has amendments. I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendments say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four zero nine, transparency and oversight in claims and litigation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Per the president's office request, we'll hold this bill until the next meeting.
Without objection, this bill will be held until the October seventh meeting. Thank you. Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four four, complete streets, extended deadlines, modified effective date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. The Transportation Committee held a hearing on this bill on Wednesday, September eleventh. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. As this bill pertains to the extension of certain deadlines, one of which is looming at October third, and we'd like to get this onto the mayor's desk in order to extend these deadlines before that one, I'd like to waive the rules in order to have this bill moved to be voted on third reader on the same day.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
The ayes have it, and this bill moves to third reader today. Third reader requiring the invocation of City Council Rule twelve dash one for a same-day advance from second to third reader.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four four four, complete streets, extended deadlines, modified effective date. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill eighteen dash zero three zero four, property, property tax credits, nine one one, public safety telecommunicators. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero three seven one, zoning, conditional use banquet hall, forty-three thirty-nine York Road, a portion of the property known as forty-three thirty-five to forty-three thirty-nine York Road. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four zero two, zoning, conditional use parking lots, Holland Lithograph Building. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four zero eight, amending ordinance fifteen dash zero four two eight, Franchise Crown Castle NG Atlantic Fiber LLC. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four two zero, zoning, signing variances, fourteen eleven Warner Street and three oh one Stockholm Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Committee announcements, this side.
The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee would like to re-announce two hearings that will be televised, one eight dash zero three zero seven for Thursday, September twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, at ten AM. This is going to be the Water Accountability and Equity Act. The second hearing is going to be one nine dash zero three two zero, Thursday, October the third, two thousand nineteen, at ten AM within council chambers. That's going to be passenger-for-hire services tax. A new committee announcement for Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee, one nine dash zero one five zero R, Thursday, October the tenth, ten AM in council chambers. This is going to be investigative hearing, entities receiving city funds, are they holding up their end of the bargain?
Thank you. Committee announcements on this side. Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, October third, at five oh one p.m. On the monthly crime stats of the police department, and this hearing will be televised on Charm TV.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, this legislative oversight hearing was announced a while ago, but just as a reminder, the Transportation Committee will hold a hearing this Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, at three p.m. On the subject of the resurfacing program and ADA compliance in the city, thank you.
Thank you. This side, Councilwoman Sneed.
The Labor Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, at one p.m. The Baltimore Police Department Staffing and Recruitment Hiring and Retention, for the purpose of holding a legislative oversight hearing, to have the Baltimore Police Department update the Committee on Police Officers Recruitment, Hiring, Retention, and what progress has been made to implement the department's civilization plan.
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes, it's not a Mervo Dunbar week, so you don't have to wait till last, Councilman Stokes.
Okay, we'll see. The Executive Appeals Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, September the twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, at ten a.m. To review the file nomination for Commission for Historical Architectural Preservation, and that person is Jill Dennis from the sixth district, thank you.
Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President, I rise to announce the rescheduling of two bills that are originally announced for tomorrow, the first of which is Bill number nineteen zero four zero six. That will be held on October twenty-second at two p.m. in council chambers, and that is Franchise Silco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless. And then also, at two oh five on the twenty-second, will be City Council Bill nineteen zero four zero seven, which is the franchise, a new singular Y O S P C S. Also, I announced two other hearings, so on November twelfth, at three thirty p.m. in council chambers, we'll be hearing City Council Bill nineteen zero four three two, Campaign Signs in Residential Areas, repeal of earliest date requirement. Followed by Bill number nineteen zero one four eight R at three thirty-five p.m. on the twelfth, and that is an informational hearing regarding mold in housing sponsored by Councilman Henry, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Health Committee will hold three legislative oversight hearings. The dates and times are as follows, on Wednesday, October thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, beginning at five p.m., a hearing will be held on the topic of gun violence reduction. On Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, beginning at five p.m., a hearing will be held on the topic of tobacco cessation. And on Wednesday, December eleventh, at five p.m., a hearing will be held on the topic of lead paint. All hearings will be televised, held here in the council chambers, and are open to the public.
Thank you, Councilman Rosenger.
Mr. President, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero four one five, on Wednesday, November the sixth, at one p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a, two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district with variances located at seventeen hundred West Franklin Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero four one eight on Wednesday, November sixth, at one oh five p.m. in the council chambers. This is zoning, it's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling unit in the R eight zoning district with variance, located at ten forty-seven North Caroline Street. And the committee will hold a hearing on Bill nineteen dash zero four one nine on Wednesday, November sixth, at one ten p.m. This is a zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a three-dwelling unit in the R seven zoning district, variances located at twenty-three ten Utah Place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, Judiciary Committee will hold a voting session on Monday, October seventh, at one p.m. in chambers, on Bill nineteen dash zero four zero one, Comprehensive Bag Reduction at the Request of Councilman Henry. Judiciary will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, at ten a.m. On Council Bill nineteen dash zero one six three R, informational hearing, closed means closed, clarifying three-one-one services approach to resolving requests at the request of Councilman Pinkett. Also, that day at ten a.m., we will have, actually, pardon me, I move to suspend rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President, Judiciary will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, at ten a.m. Council Bill nineteen dash zero one six seven R, Creating Another Early Voting Polling Place in West Baltimore, at the request of Councilman Pinkett. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, October third, at five p.m. This is a legislative oversight hearing for Baltimore City Police Department. My colleague, Councilman Schleifer, who chairs Public Safety, will announce the accompanying hearing. Budget and Appropriations will hold a hearing on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, at two p.m. in chambers. It's Council Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 four R, Budget Oversight Hearings for Baltimore City Public Schools, two thousand nineteen fiscal year closeout at the request of Costello. And Cybersecurity and Emergency Preparedness Committee will hold a hearing. This will be legislative oversight, cyber attacks, awareness, prevention, and mitigation. This will be televised on Charm TV on Wednesday, November sixth, at five p.m. At the request of Council President Scott, and, Mr. President, as you're aware, just to share with our colleagues, Councilman Schleifer, who will be co-chairing that committee with me, we have set up a number of expert interviews to discuss the scope of the committee and get a better understanding of which direction we should be going. If there's anyone who has expertise in the fields of cyber security or emergency preparedness, we would ask that you reach out to Councilman Schleifer or myself. We've already connected a number of those experts who have reached out to us or to you, Mr. President, so that we can get them in to help, have them help guide us on the scope of this committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, regular announcements, and I'll start by first asking Councilman Rosenger to honor a moment of silence for the now two hundred and forty-nine victims of homicide in the city of Baltimore, and all those that we've lost to the opioid crisis as well. We also have some very special guests with us tonight, members of this year's class of G B C leadership are here tonight, so let's give them a round of applause. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
I'd like to request a moment of silence from Mr. William Dick Bonnet. Bonnet passed away on September the eighteenth. He was known to his family and friends as Dick or Dicky, to his grandchildren and great-grandchildren as Pops. To me, Mr. Bonnet was my kind and dependable neighbor. Mr. Bonnet was also the son of Baltimore City Councilman William Bonnet, who was known as the dean of the city council and represented the first district from the nineteen thirties to the nineteen sixties, the late nineteen sixties. He didn't follow his father into politics, instead, he started from the bottom, working in a mailroom at Esso, ESO, which we now know as Exxon. And then he went on to own multiple businesses and properties throughout our city, including Frankfurt Towing. As his neighbor, I witnessed Mr. Bonnet go to work every single day, every single day, Monday through Sunday. He was a strong advocate for his workers, and he believed in second chances. His belief was that if you were a hard worker, your path should not be an obstacle for obtaining a career. Some of his employees were not able to get a job anywhere else, but Mr. Bonnet provided that fair chance for them. He would often say that he was the last of the old-timers, and he always provided great, practical advice to myself, especially during these last three months, and countless other young politicians in northeast Baltimore. He supported us, and he was one of our loyal Charm City TV viewers, watching every council hearing, every Board of Estimates meeting, and Liquor Board meetings. Mr. Bonnet loved his family, he loved his workers, and he loved our great city of Baltimore. He will truly be missed by every one that he touched, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President, I also rise to ask for a moment of silence to remember a fallen comrade here in these chambers. This past Friday, September twentieth, was the eleventh anniversary of the shooting and killing of our former council colleague, Kenneth N. Harris, Sr. And so I would ask that we would have a moment of silence in his memory tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President, today Goucher College released a poll showing that seventy percent of Marylanders believe we are not spending enough on education, and seventy-four percent favor increasing taxes to pay more for education. It is not a coincidence that also today, almost fifty of our schools here in Baltimore were forced to dismiss early because their air conditioning is not functioning. We live in the richest state in the United States of America, it should be embarrassing to all of us and to those who represent us in Annapolis, including our governor, that we continue to consistently underfund our schools, that we have a massive maintenance backlog. This is the year when Kerwin goes before the legislature, and so I look forward to working with you on your resolution and holding either a hearing in the Education Committee or the Committee of the Whole to discuss how we as a city need to contribute more to support our kids, because our future is dependent on it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I want to thank my colleague, Danielle McCray, for her great eulogy for Dick Bonnet. I have, over the last couple of years, as the council's representation on the Trespass Towing Committee, had the peculiar pleasure of getting to know Dick Bonnet. I, one of his long, long-time employees, and somebody who was, for all intents and purposes, family to him, Paula Protoni, was the, is a constituent of mine, and was the industry rep on the Trespass Towing Board for nine years. And I called her the day after Dick's passing and asked her how she was doing, and she said she was at work doing exactly what Dick would have had anybody doing, that there were mouths to feed, and that Frankfurt and Mel's Towing, and Ted's Towing, and Loading Dock Liquors, all of which were owned by Dick Bonnet, were a family, and that they were going to get through this together, and that they were all working through this. I will miss Dick, and thank you again, Councilwoman McCray, for your kind words to him. I, over the weekend, had the extreme pleasure of driving a one-hundred-and-twenty-three-year-old street car at the Baltimore Street Car Museum down on Falls Road. They celebrated their public reopening after repair to damages done by a C S X train falling on them. It was an extreme pleasure to drive this street car, and I just want to encourage, as I, as I commonly encourage people, to go out and avail themselves of all the cultural opportunities that the city has to offer. And I just love to get everybody out to the Street Car Museum, it's really a fascinating place, and there are some really incredible, incredibly devoted volunteers that make what they do possible. So get down to the Street Car Museum, they're open on the weekends. Here in City Hall, I want to invite folks down to City Hall for the fantastic Derek Adams Show in the City Hall Galleries, just to you on Charm TV, the Dick Bonnets of the world. We have a gallery here, and it has great art in it, and I hope you will come down to City Hall and see the Derek Adams Show. For those who have the capacity to wake up and be incredibly intellectually stimulated first thing in the morning, there's a monthly speaker series called Creative Mornings, and the September talk will be this Friday at eight a.m. at the Enoch Pratt Library, and it will be given, household plug here, by my partner, Aaron Fostel, on the subject of Muse. And finally, I'll mention a really interesting and fun thing that's been happening here in Baltimore for the last seven years, maybe more, I don't know, the Sweaty Eyeballs. Picture that, Sweaty Eyeballs is a three-day juried festival of the world's most cutting-edge, quirky, and boundary-pushing animation. It is a festival of short animation films, and this year it will be held at the Parkway Theater, October fourth through sixth, so go get yourself some sweaty eyeballs, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
May I?
Yes, sir, Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
I just want to make one more note here, thank you, Councilman Cohen, that the B S O management and musicians have agreed on a one-year deal with a shortened season and pay raises for the musicians. So I want to continue to voice my support for the B S O musicians, thank you, Mr. Council President, for showing up to their concert in northwest Baltimore. And I will continue to, as I would hope that the rest of my colleagues would and the rest of the city, stand in solidarity with the musicians and supporting this institution.
Thank you, and before I recognize Councilman Costello and Councilman Scheifler, I just want to say, as someone that represented Dick Bonnet for a long time and spent lots of, lots and lots of hours, not just buying gas, but in his office, getting what I call tutelage from him, it's a man that will be missed, and that our neighborhood will miss dearly, for someone who not just employed a bunch of people, but poured into young men and young women on a daily basis of their knowledge. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, I apologize, I made a mistake before, Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, October tenth, not the third, at five p.m. in chambers, and this is a legislative oversight hearing of the police department at the request of Council President Scott, thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scheifler. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, five oh one p.m.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scheifler.
Thank you, Mr. President, I was going to move short titles for the announcements, but I missed that. I want to re-announce the new date for this monthly oversight hearing for October tenth at five p.m., and it'll be televised on Charm TV, thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members, I want to take the occasion to acknowledge that the six-year legislative director of my council office has changed sides and is here tonight on the administration's side, Stephanie Murdock, and so tonight is her first night on the other side of the hall, and I just want to say how proud I am of her. As you all know, I am retiring eventually, I keep saying it, and I really will, don't worry, but because of that, Stephanie went looking for a job and found one across the street. So that's very convenient for me, because I don't even have to phone her, I can just yell and say, what had ever happened to that file on fifteen dollars minimum wage? So I'm glad, would you stand up for a minute, Stephanie, so we can all see you in your new role? So she is now the legislative liaison for the Department of Housing with the General Assembly, as well as with us here in the city council. So I look forward to that, and thank you for the privilege of calling her out and saying hello.
Thank you, and Stephanie, she called you out, just to let you know, every council member has sent you ten emails since the meeting started. Chair recognizes Councilman Rosenger.
Mr. President, before we begin, I just want to say that Stephanie, this is eight CDs gained, not lost with Stephanie. Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, August the seventh, at five p.m. And I ask for a moment of silence, Mr. President, for William Dick Bonnet, the two-hundred-and-forty-nine homicide victims, and also Ken Harris, Sr.
Thank you, there being no further business, this concludes the sixty-seventh meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council.